Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we're joined by our amazing team and we're excited to have you here today. We've got Kim and Jessica and Colin and founders Greg and Amanda. You guys come say hello. I'm gonna actually, no, I'm on gallery view. Let's Brady Bunch this. Hi! I always forget to do this.
Hey, everybody.
Hello!
I like this better. This is so much better. Awesome. Hey, everybody in the chat, come in and say hello. Let us know where you're coming in from. If you came here today with questions, then please, please, please go ahead, start putting those in the Q and A. We promise we will do our best to get to every question that you came with today. We're going to do our best to do that in a timely fashion. So be on the lookout if you ask a question, you may get a typed response this week if you're here live. And for those of you who watch this as a replay, this is a live session that you get to come and watch every week for free. If you're building a business with Young Living, we're here to help you do it. And we're here every week at noon Eastern. GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession is the link to join. Share with your teams and come get on this call where all these amazing people are and all these chats blowing up over here. This is great. Alright, so today, you guys, and this is a big thank you really to our community for being so engaging and asking so many great questions. Today, this is kind of a special request on behalf of quite a few members, right? Kim, you've actually gotten a lot of questions about this?
Yeah, we got a lot of questions actually just in the last week. I don't know if there was something in the water or in the air or something about scheduling things, but it's awesome. I love to see that people are engaged and they want that organization and we want to help them. So we have you covered.
Absolutely. Yeah, big hearts to you guys. I'm obsessed with organization. I'm a natural blue personality. So that's one of those 10,000-hour expertise things. I went born this way. I really had to work hard to get to this. So one of the things that you could really do to increase your effectiveness and your productivity is to insert opportunities for the most ready people to get onto a schedule with you. Whether you have a separate scheduling software, which we are going to show today. We don't have this integrated in terms of like, we have our own scheduler inside of Get Oiling that's been on a wishlist. It's a very difficult thing for even our magic wand wielding founder here, Greg, to get done. But today, I'm going to show you a couple of options for how you can actually insert your own. I'm going to use Calendly as an example today, but also talk through some examples of how you could use built-in features in Get Oiling to initiate a specific appointment setting conversation that you don't need to have a separate software for. So we'll show you how to do this entirely with Get Oiling, which interestingly enough, that particular thing I'm talking about is also how you can survey your people. So if you wanted to ask a couple of questions of your leads as opposed to just getting their name and email, we're going to show you how you can do that today as well. So I'm going to hop over and share my screen, guys. We're going to do training and walkthrough here. These are doubt, like there's downloadable slides that you'll get below this as a recording. You'll get this, well, but below the recording on YouTube. And you will also receive them if you're on our list as a downloadable as well. So that you can take this and use it to slide by slide, follow along and set this thing up inside your system. So let's go ahead and get into this training. We're excited to have you guys here today. Looks like you're coming in from all over the place. And yeah, like as always, super just honored to have you. Alright, I'm gonna pop video off so they can get the best view of the screen. Team, if you guys can do the same, we'll get the show on the road. Alright, beautiful. Thank you. So welcome back. This is the weekly work session. We're going to talk about adding surveys and calendar booking to your Get Oiling funnels. So if you've got questions, like I mentioned, go ahead and add those to the Q and A. If you came here today struggling with something, if you need help with something, you need some handholding, you need a question answered, head over to the Q and A and ask them now. So here's what to expect on our call today. First, I'm going to show you what a survey and booking funnel can look like in action in our system. Then you're going to get a breakdown of exactly how it's made, what settings go where, what checkboxes are clicked, which forms are filled and how. And then you'll be able to download the slides for reference so that you can go put this to use in your system. And then, of course, we'll have some live Q and A after this training. So just to note, for those of you who are brand new, this is going to feel a little advanced because it kind of is. Just understand that everything that you can learn in our system is a worthwhile thing to learn. Just start with one thing at a time, right? So if you have no idea what a funnel is, then deep breaths, you're going to have, you know, everything that you need to follow along and set this up for yourself with visual aids. So if you go to Get Oiling, Get Oiling's YouTube channel and you search for funnel, you can find some more introductory trainings to what funnels are and what they do for your Young Living business. So you may want to, if you're catching this as a replay, check out some of those trainings so that you've got a basis of understanding. So and also make sure you're on our list, GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession, so you can join these live calls. So thank you again for sending us these questions. This is literally a thing that we are doing because we got a bunch of questions about it this week. So let's talk about using surveys in your funnels. So why would you want to use a survey, right? First, if you're using a survey, whether you are using a third-party service or you are going to use what we're going to show you in Get Oiling today, this is a great way for you to gather additional information from someone who is already registering to get something from you, right? If somebody is going to opt in on a landing page that's giving away a video or a guide or a recipe, a DIY, what have you, why not learn a little bit more about them while they're offering up their contact information, right? Would that not help you when you reach out to them one-on-one to be able to initiate a more effective conversation? You can also better qualify your leads in this way. So I'll show you a little bit of what this looks like. If you are a coach and you're someone who, you know, who has sort of gating in place or prefer to have some kind of gating or filtering in place to, you know, kind of not have the wrong people show up in your funnel or on a call with you, then this is a great way to do that as well. And then, of course, those calls that you make with your leads, however you would be directing them, those are going to be more productive as a result. So let me ask you this. What if every week you had a consistent flow of leads who were scheduling themselves to speak with you, who are ready to hear about what you have to offer them? Do you think that that would transform your business? Maybe just quick show of hands. If, I mean, if three people showed up and put themselves on your calendar every week and said, "Tell me about Young Living." If it was two, if it was one, like what difference would it make for you if people could just say, "You know what? I'm ready. I'm going to get on her calendar right now." That would be really powerful for your business, right? So who wants to see this in action? Are you excited to see this? I'm excited to show it to you. Look at those hands. Alright, so first, let's see what your lead sees. So imagine that you are this person that has this account that I'm about to show you in Get Oiling. And this is somebody who was on your Facebook, who saw something you posted. This was somebody who was in your lead group, who decided they wanted to get into more of the information that you shared. This was someone who you met at a, you know, at a vendor event, who just wants to learn more about what you have to offer, alright? So we're going to show you from their point of view, and then we're going to get the inside scoop. We'll show you what the inside of the funnel looks like and how you can set it up in Get Oiling. So first, here's Jane, alright? Jane has a front page here on Get Oiling. You can go and check out different things that she has to offer, learn a little bit about her and contact her. All of here, all here from her front page inside of Get Oiling. So this is her homepage. If you can imagine, janejones.com, that's not her URL, but this is what her front page would be, okay? So if you go and you look up here, "Join the Community," right? If we were to click that button there, that's going to go to this landing page, alright? This landing page invites them to get access to her private lead group. It's a community of people who are not Young Living members yet, who would become Young Living members. This is where she's kind of warming them up to become her members, alright? So people join her member group. This is her member area that they get access to after registering on that landing page. Now, inside here, they have to, they have the opportunity to join this vault that she's calling the Holistic Hideaway. This is where she has challenges and where she shares recipes and has a community, kind of like you would have on a Facebook group, alright? So you go in there and she's got this "Start Here" page. This is where everybody should go. She's telling them to go there, alright? So this is how you use this group and then this set of resources that she has. And on that page, when she's explaining everything that you get inside of this lead group, she's offering, if you look over here to the bottom right, your Vibrant Game Plan. So this is an opportunity to get on a call with Jane and create a customized game plan to accelerate your results in 90 days, okay? So when they click that, they're going to a landing page. This is a landing page. So Jane says, "It's time you had a game plan for growth. If you're ready to take your wellness and achievement to the next level, apply for a call with me now." When they click that "Let's Do This" button, this form pops up. Now, what you're seeing right here is an opportunity to screen your leads, right? This is an opportunity to filter your leads further with information, right? And this is a way for you to gather pertinent information ahead of a one-on-one call, whether that be Zoom, whether that be on the phone, whatever that might be for you. So that when you spend that time together, you already know what they're looking help, what they're looking for help with so that you can be more effective in moving them toward the solution, which in this case would be Young Living, right? Alright, so this person is here. It's me. I fill this out, alright? So this is, this is me filling out this landing page. I'm sharing this information. And now, when I click that button, see that "Let's Get Started," I click that button. I now land on this calendar booking, alright? I did mention this is powered by Calendly if you're using them. And you can do this with other calendars, scheduling services as well. But we've got this embedded here on this page. So I pick a time and date. There we go. I set that up. And then I land on this page. She's excited to chat with me. Here's what I need to do next. And here, guys, and if you are a coach in particular, I highly recommend that you do this. You offer them an opportunity to fill out further surveys. And this is using a third-party survey. This is actually one that we use for my coaching calls to screen into my coaching programs that we have with Get Oiling. And so they then go here and then we can have a highly targeted call together, right? So that was the funnel, right? So you, you were found, like they found you through social media or wherever and got into your lead group. And then from there, you've got this opportunity to book a call. So what's in this funnel? What are, what are the things in this funnel inside of Get Oiling? First, we've got Get Oiling custom pages. That first one was a landing page, right? Where she said, "Let's get your 90-day plan in place," right? So this is demonstrated as being linked to inside of a Get Oiling member area. But yours can be linked from anywhere, right? So your landing page to your call booking funnel or your survey funnel could be something that is in your email signature. It could be something that is on your Facebook. Although I do recommend, if you're going to use this for booking a call with you, for getting on your calendar, I highly recommend that this not be something that is front and center on your website. Because as you get more visibility and more people start showing up, you don't want just anybody to be able to get onto your calendar, right? You need to be thinking like the RCD you want to be. You don't just keep your calendar open for everyone all the time, right? So what I've demonstrated here is that we've actually put this funnel, this call booking funnel, inside of a lead group, right? So this is a place where people are already pretty warmed up and would be most likely to want a call anyway. But they also are likely to have already been exposed to information that you're sharing that's relevant to them. And having a call with you is a logical next step, right? And this also means that you can set this call up as something that delivers a specific benefit to them as opposed to, "Let me get on the phone with you and pitch you Young Living," right? Quick show of hands. Does that make sense? Would it be more powerful for you to be able to get on calls with people who had a specific aim in mind that you are helping them to fix or solve? And then Young Living was just an obvious part of the solution, right? This is how you set that up for yourself. So the next page inside of this funnel is a booking page. And this is where we have embedded the form for Calendly in this case, and then a confirmation page, which is simply where the booking redirects, right? So you've got those three pages inside of Get Oiling that get this done. You have Calendly, which is optional. One of the things that you could absolutely do is set up the landing page to ask a few questions. And then on your confirmation page, you can say, "Check your email. I'm going to be getting in touch with you about booking our call together." And then you can carry that out via a campaign or direct one-on-one email from that point. So you don't actually have to if you aren't prepared to or ready to have a calendar booking service. You can set this up for yourself so that you can manually handle the call booking process, alright? Now then, the final piece here, and again, this is very optional, right? If, if you aren't offering high-ticket coaching or, you know, something that's more exclusive and needs to be more properly screened, you don't need to do the third-party survey at all. But where I'm just showing you full scope picture, this is what I do. This is what I would do, and this is what a lot of people who are offering multiple things. I know a lot of you guys are coaches as well that are using us. If you're doing this and Young Living, you're coaching and doing Young Living, I highly recommend that you use the whole funnel that I've told you about today. It's one that works beautifully. And I have personally used a funnel that is constructed exactly like this with my clients who are selling $5,000 coaching off of online webinars and converting those at over 30% on that traffic, which I don't know if you guys know about that, but it's kind of huge, alright? So here's the breakdown, okay? And again, you are going to get a copy of these slides. Don't worry. You're going to be able to have these and click through these and the explanation is written out on them, alright? So here's our custom homepage for Jane in Get Oiling. And that's where we click "Join the Community." This is a landing page, right? And this is to get into her community. I want to note here what we're talking about and what you've seen. You don't need to have these first few steps. Your landing page for your call booking funnel can be linked to, like I said, from anywhere. But this is what I recommend. You have your community, right? You get people into the community by way of this landing page. It automatically adds them to her lead group vault, alright? Now, once they're inside of the member area, that's where they go to the lead group. They go to the "Start Here" page. That's where her booking funnel is. And then there's the link. Alright, now, this is a Get Oiling custom page. This is under my site settings and you can build these custom pages off of templates. It's really simple to do. And then, of course, you've got a landing page form or a lead page, a lead form that pops up on this page. I'm going to show you how that's set up. That button, you see that button? "Let's Do This." You want to have the hashtag #lead in the URL field and make sure it looks exactly like this. And then, when you go to the page settings, which you get through following these arrows here, you set your lead form up exactly like I'm going to show you in this slide and the next one. Set up by link only. It's published. There's nothing else on there. You put your lead capture message in. And then here, guys, this is where you create the filtering or the survey or whatever it is that you would like to have here. Now, in this particular case, I have not attached a campaign. The reason why there's no campaign here is because the immediately after using, going through this form, they're going to be directed to a page to book a call with me. Now, if you were not going to do that, highly recommend that you use a campaign here or some kind of, even if it's just one campaign that confirms and says, "Hey, let me know two times that work for you this week." Alright? And that's if you're not using Calendly. Okay, so really importantly, guys, if you want to use a custom page as a survey, you want to make sure that you are spelling out what it is that you want to say, what you want to ask in these lead capture fields over here on the left. And you can have as many as six of them. And I highly recommend also that you require each one of them or else you're not going to get the information that you're looking for, alright? You can choose to do different. Up to you. This is what I recommend. In this case, the, the lead capture box is going to pop up when they move away from the page. But because we had that hashtag #lead setting in place here, it is going to come up when they click the button. But you can also have it come up as a pop-up, which you see here. Now, the next page that I'm going to show you is what this page goes to after registering, where this arrow is pointing right here. So after someone fills out this form, this information, they're going to go to the next page where they can book with you, alright? But this is what it's going to look like, right? Here's what the settings look like. Here's how you set it up. And then this is what it will look like once you've got it done. And again, I'm showing you this in the context of a call booking funnel, but this can be a survey. This can be when you give away a lead magnet. You can say, you can ask maybe two questions, two additional questions around their, you know, maybe what their greatest goals are around their wellness or what they're struggling with around their wellness, that kind of thing. You can add that stuff here and use this instead of a standard landing page when you are giving away a lead magnet to simply get more information from your leads, okay? Now, when I fill out this form, you get this email. And you're going to get an email from Get Oiling that's going to tell you exactly how they responded. So you got a new lead and all of their answers to those questions are going to show up in your email just like this. That's pretty cool, right? And then importantly, in your contact manager, you're going to see that I was recently active on your website. You're also going to see in the notes section exactly what my answers were to what questions. And then you're going to see under past actions that this note is there. Pretty cool, right? So this, all the stuff does go straight to your contact manager. So if somebody fills out information like this, whether it be for a survey or for a call, the notes are preloaded for you, ready for the call. Alright, so if you just want to survey, right? If you don't want this to be a call booking funnel, skip this next section that I'm about to show you and use only the landing page and confirmation page, okay? So that's the one where they fill out the information and then the one where you say, "Hey, I got your information. This is what you do next," okay? And if you only want to do a survey, do everything that I've shown you here, but consider attaching that campaign, like I mentioned, even a single one that says, "Hey, thanks for applying for a call with me. Give me, reply now and tell me two times that might work for you to meet this week." It's pretty simple, right? Does that make sense? Are you guys following? I know this is a lot. Does that make sense? You, you set that landing page up. Quick show of hands. You set that landing page up with the questions, right? And then you have a confirmation page and the email says, one, one message campaign you attach to that landing page that says, "What are two times that'll work for you this week? Hit Reply and let me know now," right? And then, of course, you want to make sure that you redirect to that confirmation page from the landing page. And guys, this just means that you are giving people an opportunity and a heads up to check their email inbox to make sure that you didn't go to spam and to make sure that they actually received the email from you that they're looking for. And this way, you don't miss those leads who maybe mistyped their email address or maybe your, your message did go to their spam folder and now they know to add you to their contacts so that they get all of your emails, alright? So this is the next page. This is where we actually embed our Calendly. This is where if you have a Calendly account, maybe, how many of you guys actually? Just a quick show of hands. I'm curious. How many of you use a scheduling software? Schedule Ones, Calendly, quite, quite a few options there, alright? So a handful of you guys are. So this is, this is using Calendly. That's what I use personally. We have embedded this here and it's on a Get Oiling page. So we are not going off to Calendly.com. This is still, this is showing up on Jane's website. Pretty cool, right? So it's embedded inline on the page. Let me show you how to do that. And this is, of course, what it looks like. They're still on your page as they're selecting these options and confirming their appointment time with you, alright? So, and again, this is printable, don't worry, or downloadable, alright? So you embed your booking form this way. In your Calendly account or in your other booking account, you're going to find the settings for the specific event, the calendar event that you want to share. And you're going to find the "Add to Website" option, alright? You're going to then select the "inline embed" option. This just means that it is going to show up inside your website, alright? So you're going to select the "inline embed" option, then you're going to copy the code that they provide you. This makes you nervous. Deep breath. It's actually pretty simple, alright? So copy this code and then you're going to follow these steps. Step one, there is this "More Miscellaneous" button right over here in a section of your booking page. So this is inside of a Get Oiling custom page. You create one of these sections. You hit this "More Miscellaneous" button and it's going to give you an option for code view. After you select and open code view, you're going to see all these crazy letters and numbers and brackets and stuff. For those of you who don't code, you're going to see this. You're going to paste that copied code, making sure that before you paste, your cursor is placed outside of an existing bracket of code so you don't wind up with something really weird. That's not what you want, alright? And then finally, after you've pasted, seriously, this is just copy and paste. These are the buttons you click to paste. Then you toggle back out of code view and, and then it actually shows up on your site and you'll be able to see it. You save the page, you view the page, and you actually have a booking form on your site, okay? Now, inside of Calendly or your chosen booking service, depending on what level of membership you have with them, you may have an option to redirect, to have a redirect URL, okay? This is going to redirect to a thank you page or a confirmation page. A very simple page that you should absolutely set up in your Get Oiling custom pages to use for any funnel that you create so that you aren't just redirecting straight to the thing you're giving away. You are redirecting to a page that says, "Hey, I sent you something. Check your email. Add me to your email or add me to your list, add me to your contacts so you don't miss my email. Here's my email in case, you know, let me know if you don't get what I just sent you. Go check that out right now." Right? It's just a good practice. It's a good thing to have in place. So you put your redirect URL here and this is a booking confirmation page, which is a custom page again on Jane's website. It looks like this, okay? So this is Jane's booking confirmation page. This is also a Get Oiling custom page. This is the three that I mentioned, right? There's only three custom pages in Get Oiling that it takes to set this thing up. So here we go. To make the most of our time together, be sure and fill out this form completely so we can wrap up with a complete game plan for you. Click here to get the form. So in Jane's case, because let's just pretend that I'm Jane here, Jane also sells high-ticket coaching. And she includes a more in-depth survey link here to make the call more effective. It's an optional step, but an ideal one, guys. If, if you are not selling high-ticket coaching, then you could leave this out entirely. But I do want to note, there is an important thing that you should know. If you are using third-party surveys or quizzes for any particular reason, you do have the ability to download, just like you do from the VO, the information that you receive from those services and then upload those into your Get Oiling account, just like you would your contacts from the VO. And that could actually add notes and other information to your contact file. Alright, so, which is kind of what I said right here. I forgot I wrote this. So this is the example of the survey redirect. This is on Survey Gizmo. There are plenty of other services that you could use. We use the free level on this one. Type Forum actually has even prettier interactive surveys and I love using them. So that's again, another option. This is an example of what we use when, when booking calls with potential coaching clients. And just understand that if you are using something like this, it's not going to directly input information automatically into your leads' contact file. You just have to make sure that it, obviously, you can copy and paste into the notes section manually if you're getting a lot of leads, which, you know, is, is, you're probably fine with copying and pasting. I can just put it that way. But if this is going to go out to 5,000, 100 people, right? Then what you want to try to do is export the CSV file from the survey provider, just like you would from your VO and Young Living, and then upload that information into Get Oiling. Obviously, making sure where you are surveying, let's just say for instance, your members. You might want to note when you're asking for the email address that they make sure they use the email that they've registered with for Young Living so that it shows up correctly in your contact manager. Alright, so just to recap, this is the booking funnel. First, step one, your lead finds and offers to have a one-on-one call with you. Then they register on your call booking page, that landing page, the custom page in Get Oiling. Step three, they go to a calendar booking page where they can book themselves on your calendar. Step four, they receive confirmation and instructions on your booking page. Step five, they may or may not fill out additional info on a third-party survey form. And then step six, you have that great call with all that qualifying information already worked out and you sign up your new member or client. And that's it. So who's excited to get to work? I know a lot of you, especially, I saw you guys in the Go for Gold student group today or yesterday, were really excited to see this. I know a lot of you guys have a diverse set of offerings in terms of what you do with your members and with your clients at large. So really excited to share this a little more advanced training with you guys today. There's so much you can do with our platform and it's just such a great value for, for what you're getting. You don't need to have seven different things to make this work like a lot of other systems do. You can really have this all under one roof, which is really, really powerful. So let's go ahead and get over into the Q and A. We can come back to, come back to video here, team. And remember, 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 the, the slides for this will be available to you below the video on the replay and of course, in your email once we're, we're done here today. So, awesome. How are we doing over here with the chat? We got a lot of questions, like a lot less questions. We got, got a lot of questions, uh, like a lot less questions than I'm used to seeing here. Alright, um, I'll, we'll, we'll start this off. If you've got them, go ahead and add them. So Carrie asks, how would the funnel work if your lead group is on Facebook? So what you would do is, uh, is going back and actually, I can show you here, uh, where you would start. And actually, no, I'm going to show you. You can just referring to what you've already seen and to the downloads that you'll get. You really just need the three pages, right? I showed you her front page that goes into a landing page that goes into her lead group, right? But the link was in her lead group. So just imagine the steps up to where it was found in the lead group is just in your Facebook group, right? So if you have a lead group on Facebook, then you have a book a call with me link. Uh, and then that goes to the, um, the custom page. Remember, there's three of them. It goes to the custom page that showed, that sells them on getting on a call with you. They fill out a little survey form and then, and then, and then everything that I just showed. So you just have the link to the, uh, the front page of the booking funnel inside of your lead group. Alright, got that one too, Marie. Alright, uh, do you think this would be useful in offering consultations for aromatherapy? If you are a certified aromatherapist, 1,000% yes. If you do like a complimentary consultative call, this is such a great way to do it because you don't want just anybody and it needs to, well, think about it this way. Even if, even if you don't have like a large audience at this point, it's important for your lead, for your potential end client here to feel like this is a highly relevant exercise that they're participating in so that they're more open to whatever it is that you're going to offer on the call, right? So, um, so absolutely. So if, if you are offering consultations for aromatherapy, maybe ask them what their goals are around it in the survey form. You know, kind of queue them up and get them thinking about things. And then, of course, if you need something that's more extensive that requires longer form answers or yes or no and you know, there's more complicated stuff than you can get with the short answers on the, the GetOiling lead form, then of course, you could use, you know, a Typeform or Survey Gizmo or, or whatever. So yeah, that would work great if you're an aromatherapist. Can you, and this is a great question. So embedding code is something that you can do at premium and above. If you are at basic and you are not seeing a path to upgrading your membership with GetOiling at this point, your option is to redirect. So in the, um, in the page where I showed you, and you'll get this in the slides, that what the settings are for your lead form on the, um, the landing page that would lead to booking, you're going to redirect to whatever your, your lead form is or to a thank you page where you have that email, that quick email that says, hey, you know, respond with a couple of times that work for you. So there is a way to do this with basic. It's just not going to be an embedded form. Alright, if they're a current member in your VO and what field is a key to know who it is? Email or phone number? Greg, that's going to be multiples, right? Like, uh, our system hashes for multiples?
Yeah, I guess it depends on whether you're importing or coming from a landing page. If you're importing a file from the VO, it does have your, uh, have their member number on there. So it does attempt to use that to look them up first to duplicate. If they're, uh, coming from a lead form, it does, I think, use, try to use both email and phone number to look them up. So I, I don't know the exact specifics offhand, but it does attempt to use both of them at some levels, uh, on the landing page. So it will do its best to not create a bunch of duplicate contacts, but if they do use a different email address, you're going to get a second one. And that happens a lot. Everyone's got like five emails these days, right?
Yeah, and we, we can't help that, right? Yeah, and, and that's, guys, that's, just, just so you know, in the world of, of marketing things on the internet, like that's, it's common. Everybody deals with it. Alright, Krista says, following Go For Gold, it suggests to have a free consult at the bottom of my website. Should I change this to my lead group on Facebook? So at the bottom of the website, offering a free consult, this would be a great, like, you, you, that could be the link, right? Like that says, you know, schedule your free consult and it goes over to this booking page or rather, it needs, well, it goes over to the, the front page of the booking funnel. You still need them to register, right? I would not put a direct link to like get on my calendar just on my website. You need to have opted in so that I have your contact information. I know you're a real lead, a real person, not a robot, not a spammer before you have the ability to get on my calendar. My calendar is sacred, guys. If your calendar is not sacred, then understand that's one of the first transformations we need to make internally in our agreements about ourselves and, and, and what we're willing to do to get what we want out of life. Your calendar is sacred. So it should be behind a landing page and maybe behind several. That's what, I mean, I, I put them behind several. You can't just get onto my calendar, alright? So, uh, so yeah, so with, with what you're talking about with Go For Gold, have that as the potential contact form or put it inside of your lead group. What I've shown to you here is, in my opinion, I mean, it's what I would do, right? You could have a, you know, a, a form on your site that allows them to get over to book you directly without them being in your lead group. If I were you, I'd have it be inside the lead group. Like you can't get on my, my calendar until you have gotten in and immersed yourself in all of the work that I have put into providing you with really great information, right? You get that first, then you can get on a call with me. Alright, Tamara says, wheels are turning. I came in late, so you may have already answered. Can you somehow add a video into Typeform? Thinking this would be great to pitch to professionals. I can't speak to Typeform. I don't know. I think that you can. But I do know that you can embed videos on your custom pages in GetOiling. And that would actually be a great thing for you to put, really on the front of any landing page. Video is a really great thing to use on landing pages. So if you have a quick video that just says, you know, hey, this is me. I'm offering this call. On the call, we're going to cover X, Y, and Z so that you can achieve this outcome that you want. Fill out the information here and then we'll work out getting you on my schedule. And then, of course, if you embed Calendly after that, cool. If you have an email campaign that goes out that requests for them to send back a couple of times that work for them and then you volley back and forth on that, either way, that's fine. It is, it, a great way to pitch professionals, though, honestly, is, is to show up relevantly in front of professionals. And then, of course, you know, lead, it's, it's the same thing, right? Whether, whether it's, uh, you know, it's, it's moms with babies or women in corporate, in the corporate world, provide them with something that they need that's valuable and important to them and have a breadcrumb trail for them to follow. So the breadcrumb trail goes into a lead group. Have a lead group that's relevant to, uh, you know, Miss Corporate, whatever. And, uh, and then, of course, have that opportunity kind of upsell the call, free call inside of that group. Alright, Holly says, do you think it would look okay? And is there enough room to ask questions? Like which color do you like best? Uh, and just have them choose the letter. Hmm.
Is that like a, are you human test, maybe?
Yeah, curious, curious what your aims are with that, Holly. I think that this, what we've shown you here today, like the form that you can put up as a pop-up on a GetOiling custom page, like a, a landing page using custom pages, is, is really just to ask short form questions. But you could say, and there is enough room to say, which color do you like, you know? Pick a color, red, blue, or white. Uh, and then, you know, hopefully they'll type one of those things in there. It's not going to be like a dropdown menu or what have you. I think it really just depends on like, what are you, what are you going to do with that information? Like, how does it relate to how you would close that lead? Like, what, what does that look like for you strategically? Alright, do you recommend that they register on a landing page before they get access to your Facebook lead group? Rather than allowing them to just request to join the Facebook lead group? So if you, if you're using a lead group on Facebook, I would just have some questions like that you filter, either you or an admin approve for answering, you know, making sure that, that they actually should be in that group. And you just have that link to your Facebook group from wherever. But I don't, I don't think that you need to put a landing page in front of a Facebook group. If you wanted to do something like a challenge group or, you know, something that was a little more, um, specialized, you know, and you want someone more qualified to be able to get into it, then you might want to gate that because it is sort of like higher restricted access. But if it's just a lead group and you're building a community, like a warmed up pool of people who could be your prospects for Young Living or other things, then, um, no, just have it be a Facebook group that people can join if it looks interesting to them. But ask questions, like make sure that they're right for it. Krista says, I am a holistic Montessori consultant. That's awesome. And that is what my website and lead group is around, following Go For Gold. So I could provide coaching around implementing Montessori in the home via this setup. Yes, yes, you could. So you know what you could do, Krista? You create an online program, an online class using the vaults and online classes feature in GetOiling. You have that vault, entry to that vault require payment, whatever you want to charge for this consulting. And then, of course, you have this call booking funnel where they get on a call with you. Obviously, not everybody's going to be a fit for that thing. But when you get on these calls and they've answered the questions and those questions line up with the right profile that you're looking for and you guys have a successful call, then you bring them over to the vault page where they enter their payment information, sign up, bam, you've got a new client. So yeah, yes, absolutely use this for that. I mean, this is literally, um, I actually, going back 2014, I was working with holistic, uh, with a holistic business coach who was working specifically with holistic wellness practitioners and helping them get online. And, um, and we actually had every 90 days a live $5,000 group coaching program that we sold via these strategy calls. And, and what we had in place were an initial filter. They, they're, they sign up for a call and then they filled out a more extensive survey and then the salesperson got on the phone with that survey information and bam, 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 right? Like filled up these online courses at $5,000 a pop. Like this is a funnel that works, uh, you know, for stuff like that. Absolutely, absolutely. Whether it's one-on-one coaching, if it's group coaching. I, I will say again, like adding that additional survey at the end, if what you are offering is getting someone into Young Living might be more than is necessary. I would really just have those initial things. And then maybe, I mean, if, if you are, like, if you have kind of a specialty, you know, if, if you have worked with Lyme disease or autoimmune or something like that and you just want more of a profile so that you can have more questions asked and answered before you get on the call together, then maybe that's something you can do. But I would really encourage you to keep it simple if you don't have another thing that you're monetizing. Alright, if you want to use this type of funnel to find prospects besides the setup call button mention and Go For Gold, would you also have it on lead magnets after they opt in? Yes, um, I would put a lead, a lead magnet or a lead booking funnel, right? So, so the strategy call funnel, we'll call it. This strategy call funnel, I would put inside of a lead group. I would put in an email signature, uh, for people who are already leads, like, so they have already opted in for something so that when my broadcast goes out and I'm sharing a blog post, there's a little blurb in my signature that says, hey, you know, you want to get on the phone with me? Here's how you do it. I wouldn't have that out to the whole world, right? I wouldn't have that on like public Facebook page. But if someone signed up and, and is on my list, yeah, they should be able to see it. So put that wherever it's visible. Alright, Marie says, I guess that if they do a landing page, I would then get them in my contacts. Correct, yes. They would be entered into your system. And the thing is, is you can use landing pages, whether our standard template landing pages or these custom pages for whatever you want. And your members, your leads will go through them multiple times for different purposes. And this automates the tagging of your leads for you, right? So if, if you want to segment your list and ha, and know who is into homeschooling, then you offer, you know, lead magnets that are specifically about homeschooling. Have a homeschool tag on that landing page. And now, like, if you, if there's something, if you want to offer, you know, a five-day program for homeschool moms, then you filter for your homeschool tags and then you send that to those people, right? Or I'm offering calls to, you know, homeschool moms. Filter for that, offer the call to those people. Alright, Dee says, I've introduced the hashtag to contact me on every blog to encourage people to reach out. Do you think this is a mistake? No, no, I, I don't think it's a mistake, especially if you're just getting started. It takes a while to build up organic visibility to your blog. You need to be blogging regularly and using keywords in the right places and, you know, backlinks and all that kind of good stuff if you want to get a whole lot of visibility organically with your blog. For now, if you aren't doing any of those advanced strategies and you're simply blogging and then sharing that with the people that are already warm market to you, then it's fine. When you get a little further along and you start getting more people that you don't know showing up because they found your content, you may want to consider gating, uh, your schedule in the way that I've described. But if you're just starting out, it's not harmful to have that there at all. You'll, you, you'll know when it's time to remove that feature. You'll know because you're too busy or you've maybe spent more time than you would prefer to, maybe with people who aren't qualified for those calls with you. Alright, Tammy says, can the survey have dropdowns? Uh, I know what they want, uh, so I know what they want to talk about. Or how do I write the question so they type it in? Alright, so you, we don't have dropdowns or any kind of bells and whistles. This is really just a custom, you know, write something in this field and it's a short answer. So, um, so this is where you would just think about the questions you could ask. You know, what is, um, you know, what's the number one reason you want to talk with me? You know, um, are you interested in this or this? Like, and, and you have like, I think, what, like six additional, uh, things you can, you can ask there. So you, you can, uh, you know, you can do whatever you want with it, really. It's just, uh, the parameters are it's short answer and short question. So it's all doable, though, and you don't have to connect it to another thing. Now, after, again, like if they're signing up for, and, you know, I'm interested in talking about my wellness or I'm interested in talking about my time management, you know, you'll know from what they say there. And then, of course, if you want before your call, depending on what you offer, to have a more in-depth survey that asks more pointed questions along those lines, then you connect a third-party survey of which, I mean, and again, we use free Typeform and Survey Gizmo to do these things, uh, like for, for us on our end. Uh, and we have, you know, a list in the tens of thousands. So like, if we can do that at free, you guys can too. So if you wanted more bells and whistles, it's really not, um, a difficult thing to add on to the pile for you, especially considering, um, you can import that information just like you do from the VO, from, you know, whatever survey files you have and upload it if you want to go bulk or just copy the responses that they give from a survey and paste it in the notes section before you have a call with that person. Alright, do you recommend having a lead group on GetOiling and Facebook? Not everyone is on Facebook or do you recommend, um, one over the other? Mary, I'm glad you enjoyed the training today. Thank you. So, uh, it really depends. Uh, I, I personally like having everything on the website because I personally really don't enjoy being on Facebook. And, and for me personally, I would prefer to maybe spend more of my time focusing on building a community on LinkedIn or whatever, like what, I, I don't want to have a social group. But that's me personally, right? Like my, um, you know, back signal, if you will, is a little more on the serious side. So if you are someone who really jives with the social scene, Facebook is going to be a better place for you to, to find your people if that's where your people are hanging out. Facebook is going to be a better place for you to, to find your people if that's where your people are hanging out. You can supplement with a lead group on Get Oiling. If you're, but I, I would say though, pretty importantly, if you know that the majority of your leads are on Facebook, don't duplicate your efforts. But if you know that you've got some solid action on Facebook, but then you've also got some solid action that's not Facebook, then back up the core content, you know? So if you've got modules in Facebook, make those lessons in, inside of Get Oiling Vault so that people have those options to interact. But don't like, you know, try to spend the same amount of time in both because that's kind of a drag. So make sure you focus on the list and the communication and the funneling down to the talking to people. All right. Does the survey information get captured into the contact? Yes, it does. That was something, we showed you a screenshot of that. You'll get an email with all of that filled out information right away and that it will show up in the notes and past actions on the contact file inside of Get Oiling. All right. Are there member pages we can visit to see this in action? I don't know that we would be able to provide you with a link to that, but we do, I mean, we could demo, like you want to actually see it, I think we could go to Jane's account and maybe just do a quick visual walkthrough here. I don't think that'd be too difficult. All right. We'll do that here in just a second. Linda says, the bulk upload from a CSV file that I mentioned is what I was referring to earlier. Is it something that's already in place? So if you are using a third-party survey or quiz provider, then no, that's not going to be automatically imported. You would have to do that manually. However, if you're doing this the way that we've shown today, using the three custom pages inside of Get Oiling to execute this funnel, then yes, it is automatically in a contact file. And of course, if you are using a third-party provider, importantly, their, their phone number or email are going to need to align with the existing contact in your system in order for those two to mesh together. It's a little more complicated. That's why I was saying if, unless you're doing like, you know, you're getting 50 or 100 of these at a time, I wouldn't do the bulk upload. I would just before a call, look for that person in the survey data, pull their information out, paste it into your notes section. It takes a lot less time and it's going to be more accurate. Sometimes automating can actually cause us more headaches. And in this particular case, I, I think that that would probably bear truth. All right. Do you recommend set up two separate Facebook accounts, one for personal? And one, no, no, I, no, 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 one Facebook account. If you want to privatize some of the things you share, like maybe if you don't want to share pictures of your kids or certain things, you can actually segment your Facebook friends list and choose what posts are visible to only friends or certain friends and what posts are visible to the world. You're going to want to have a lot of public content on Facebook if you're using your personal profile. So I mean, really just, I mean, understand that if you're going to use your Facebook profile for business, that's what life is going to look like on Facebook for you. Like, and that's how it's going to continue to be and, and, and well into the future. So be careful who you add, curate, but then also just make sure that, you know, when you are sharing and you don't want to share certain things that you have segmented so the right people see the right things. So the highly personal stuff wouldn't be visible, but you know, the oily, crunchy, happy things that you want all of your leads to see would certainly be visible front and center. All right. Is Calendly included in the premium Get Oiling site? No, Calendly is a third-party service. They do have a multitude of different levels. We are actually at a higher level because we have team features that we use. But they're, they're really reasonably priced and you can follow these same steps if you're not using Calendly, if you're using Schedule Ones, or I'm not remembering the names of the others. There's a handful of others. But they're, you know, these are calendar booking services where you can take like availability on your Google Calendar, for instance, and importing, connect it so that these things automatically pop over. Now, this is a whole different set of like software action, right? That it would be really cool if we could do, and it's something that we've talked about for a long time, but it's something that's really, really hard to do. So in this case, we're saying if you want it, really better to get it right now from the people who are doing it well and have been for a while. And we just showed you how to connect it with us. And again, if you don't want to use that, follow the steps that I went over earlier in the training and you're going to get the copy of those slides to keep for yourself and walk through. Simply take the landing page for the call booking funnel and connect it to the thank you page and attach a campaign that just says, hey, excited to talk with you. Hit, hit reply and let me know two times it'll work for you this week. You can totally circumvent the Calendly part of this if you do that. All right. Linda, when you segment your friends list, it doesn't show the people who see your posts. This was posted to only certain people. Yes. When you post something on Facebook, you have the, the ability to make it public or private or you can select like who sees it. If you have the, your Facebook list segmented, highly recommend that you start doing that early. Like if you are, if you still in a, you know, couple hundred, few hundred friends, do it now. Because once you get into the thousands, it's just, there's, there's no going back, you know, of a bunch of strangers that are on your Facebook. Okay. What's the difference between a survey program versus Google Doc survey? Do you recommend Google Docs with Get Oiling? I haven't personally used it for surveys. I know you can. I, I personally like the visual interface of Typeform. If, if I'm going to do a survey survey, I really like Typeform. It animates. It's very pretty. But I've also, we use Survey Gizmo, which is actually the screenshot that I showed you, which is very just kind of basic looking, which is very simple. And it's a little easier if you're going to have a more extensive line of questions. It's a little easier to navigate and straightforward for the end user, who in our case would be our potential coaching client. So you can pick, I, I haven't used Google Docs. You can absolutely like, well, actually, no, I mean, I, I don't know how you would have someone get on your Google Calendar. Yeah, really not sure. Do you guys, do you guys know anything about scheduling with Google? I know.
Not with like, I, I've used Google Forms a little bit before and it makes an okay survey. But yeah, I don't, I don't think they have any like, you know, get book time on my calendar thing. I mean, yeah, so.
Yeah.
They're not really set up for that.
The calendar function of that, I just realized my name is still on here as Greg. That's hilarious. The calendar function of that is, is not something I would do though. Like I wouldn't just like have my calendar just out there for someone to add themselves to it. That could, that's dangerous. But survey, I mean, why not? I mean, you can give it a try by all means. Nothing.
Yeah, it's, it's totally free. I mean, one of the cool features of Google Forms is it puts it right on a Google Doc spreadsheet so you can do stuff with the data after they've imported it. You can also do that with other programs too, you know, exporting them to CSV or what have you. But yeah, it's something worth checking out and it's totally free. I don't think there is actually a way to even pay for Google Forms.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So let's see, just, is anybody logged into the Jane account? Otherwise I'll do this.
I'm not.
Okay, I'll do it. All right. So if you guys wanted to walk through of this, I will show you on Jane's account. All right. So this is, this is Jane's website. Is this a good resolution? Are we seeing this pretty well?
Can you make the box or the window a little shorter? It's kind of square.
A little shorter. Yeah.
Yeah. There. Okay.
Yeah, perfect. All right, cool. So, all right. So here, here's Jane's website. She's got, there's a couple of options here. You can join her community. You could check out her blog. You can get her guide. Pretty cool. You could subscribe to her newsletter, but you could also join her community. So the button's here, the button's also down here. That's going to take you to a separate landing page. All right. Okay. So now I have to check my email to be able to get there since I'm already here and I know I'm a part of it. I'm going to go to her members. All right. So there we are. This is the member area. This is the lead group in the member area. Here is her Start Here doc. I'm going to scroll through that. Here's the resources for her members. She's got a challenge. She's got a chat room and oh, I can book a call with her. All right. So here she is. And see, ooh, I tried to move off the screen. It popped up for me. So I fill out the form to get instant access to the game plan and look for an email invitation to hop on a call. All right. So I'm going to put my information in here. Goals and 10 and nothing. All right. So let's get started. There we go. Now, do I see this? This is actually my Calendly. But, but here's the game plan with Jane. All right. So availability next Wednesday. I'm going to pick 1:30. Confirm. All right. I'm going to schedule the event. It's confirmed and now it's redirecting. There we go. So she's excited to talk with me. Now I have to go fill out this form. Okay. And there it is. And then I fill out this form. We get on a call and we're good to go. So just to kind of recap there, guys, this is the landing page. This is the landing page. Really, really, really simple, but it has to be a landing page on a custom page. And then you can ask whatever questions you want. Just highly recommend you make them required so that people actually fill them out. After they do that, they get on the calendar. After they get on the calendar, if you're following through all of this, they, oops, not that one. Hello. Then they get to this confirmation. Right? Which again, really simple. There's a photo. There's some info. There is a link. And your thank you page, guys, if you make a thank you page in Get Oiling, it should look like this as well. Just so, you know, here's your face, excited to talk with you. Here's what you need to do. Make sure you go do this. That's it. Nowhere else to go, no links to anything. If you wanted to maybe backlink here to your lead group, if it's on Facebook, that's something you could certainly do. But what I prefer to do in funnels is provide as few options as possible because if you give options, you don't get results. If you give options, people have the option to do nothing. So give them one option. All right. See, I think we had a couple more questions before we wrap up today. Excited to see what you guys produce from this. Okay. So we did answer the question about Google. All right. So what kind of questions were in the form, in the lengthy one? So that's going to depend, right? So that form is one that, that I use, that we use for, for coaching. So when, when someone who is in our community wants to work one-on-one with me on leadership programs and in, you know, building out full-fledged marketing systems and launches from our site, then there's a lengthy questionnaire. We actually use several of these. So the questions are going to depend really heavily upon exactly what the outcomes are that you are looking for in terms of who you want to be talking to, what kind of problems you want to solve. And also importantly, you know, what, what are their potential objections, right? Like what if you tried, like what, what if you're someone who's, you know, maybe you've, you've talked to an aromatherapist before and you just thought they were bunk? And, you know, like, okay, so have you worked with aromatherapy before, right? If this is what you're, you know, what you're aiming for here. Or, you know, have you worked with a coach before? What were the results? Is there anything that you see standing in the way of you investing in yourself? So there's lots of different kinds of questions you can ask, but, but think about those closing questions. If you've ever done any sales training, those are the questions. You just want to put them into a form and just have them answer ahead of time. Scale them one to 10 with one being just really not interested and 10 being I'm ready to do this right now. How ready are you to X, Y, Z? Those kinds of questions. You don't have to go crazy lengthy, but you do want to kind of get, you know, an idea of the problem in their words, the history of the problem, what they've done to try to solve it, what they're willing to do to solve it and what they've tried and, you know, how ready they are. All right. How can I send a test email to myself and then send it to my chosen contacts? So the email, if you, if you want to send an email to multiple people, highly recommend you create the email in a saved reply first. Have yourself added as a contact and send that saved reply email to yourself. And if you like the way that it looks, then you go and you select the contacts you want to send that email to and then bring the saved reply into the email and send it out. Saved replies are one of my favorite features in the system. It's such a simple thing, but it saves so much time. All right. Allison asks, unrelated to today's topic, I was wondering if there was a way to see the date and a text was sent in chat without looking on the contact card under past actions? Like the way you can swipe in the side of messages in an iPhone to see the time a message was sent? Can you hover over that, Greg? Can you see that?
You can, but assuming she's on her phone, I think you can do like a long press. There's some way of getting it to trigger. I don't know if you have to tap it or long press. It might vary based on iPhone versus Android. But if you can play around with that a little bit, maybe see what works for you. If not, I can look into it because it, it does, if you're on your computer and you hover over with the mouse, I believe it does show the timestamp on there somewhere, date and time, so you know exactly when it was sent. But if that doesn't work, maybe we'll have to come up with some other clever way of triggering that. So it's totally important to know the date and time. That's for sure.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. All right. Dee asks, should I use the landing page now instead of the hashtag contact? So I can edit it in the future and have more control because what would I do with the contact if it's on every blog? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, using this calendar booking form, using this calendar booking funnel rather, is always going to be more effective for you than just simply having the contact me box pop up. The contact me box is a great place to start. If, if you are like, if your head is spinning and this is too much, understand just hashtag contact on a button or a link is going to pop up your contact form and you can tell them what to do when they hit the button, you know? And, and you could have a campaign that's attached to like just the standard campaign being, hey, I'm so glad to hear from you. I'm excited to meet you. Like, you know, hit reply and let me know a couple of times to, you know, that would work for you this week. So you could do that to start, but if you're ready to do this, yes, use it instead of the hashtag contact. By all means, it's actually more effective for you long run.
Yeah. And on a blog, the, I think the hashtag lead doesn't work. Only hashtag contact does. So you have to set up a landing page, just for the clarification there from a blog post anyway.
Right, right. Yeah. So this, you would have to have the full funnel set up. There's not really a shortcut to that. All right. Although one thing you could do, and, and this is interesting, right? If you're using a, a lead group in your Get Oiling member area inside of a member vault that is for leads, that's, so if you have that start here page, like what I showed you, that's a custom page. You could have that be a pop-up. Like they could, like that could be a landing page. You could have just your start here page say, hey, have you booked a call with me yet? Like on a pop-up? That'd be, that'd be kind of cool. And, and then of course, that can move over to book you, you know, book a call with you. You could absolutely do that. Ursula, can you demonstrate it? I'm not sure what you're asking. Which, which training or which particular aspect? Can you please let me know what you're talking about so we can get that question answered for you before we hop out of here? All right. Holly says, don't understand the hashtag piece of this. All right. So there was, I'm going to show you real quick. And it's actually, it's in the slides. I'm going to show the slides here. Just, just real quick for you guys. If it'll let me, let it go. Okay, here we go. All right. So the hashtag. This is what we're talking about. The hashtag right here says lead and this is on a custom page. This is what's going to make the, the box pop up with the questions. Now, if you have a, a link on a page, let's say on your blog post, if you're, you know, if you say at the bottom of your blog post, say, hey, if you have questions about this, contact me for blah, 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 right? You highlight the text, contact me, and then you add a link, just like you would hyperlink any text. And instead of putting a URL in place, what you see here, you put hashtag contact. And when you do that, a box pops up that has your picture and your number and your email and it gives them a place to ask questions or enter their information. So that, that's the hashtag we're talking about. All right. Is there any way we can choose a date option? For example, I'm not sure Suzanne, what you mean by this with choose a date option.
I think it's date localization. Like in Europe, I think the month comes second and the day comes first and vice versa in the US. So I guess I don't know specifically where, you know, if that's like events or blog posts or what, but I don't know. We have some variation of that on our wishlist, but I don't know. Suzanne, if you can send us a comment or note or something like that, we can figure out. Maybe I'll add, make sure that section's on the wishlist anyway.
Yes, and thank you for that. All right. Ursula, okay. So when I create an email and save it as a draft, I can't later choose my audience to send it to? Yes. And that's why I was mentioning use a saved reply for this. If you use a saved reply for this, then it's not a draft anymore. So when you create a draft, you've already determined who it's going to, right? So if you choose to compose an email and you start writing it, it is going to go to the audience that you've already selected. It's going to go to all your contacts or to one or whomever, right? This is why it is so powerful to use the saved replies feature and that's under your contact settings menu. Saved replies is there is an option on the same page with campaigns and all this other stuff. So saved reply is composing an email that can go out to anyone at any point in time, but you don't have to send it. You're making a draft there, right? So let's just say for instance, you have, you know, anything that like you, you repeat a lot, right? Like these are the regular set dates and times for when we meet on Zoom and you have the link and you have the this or that. Put that into a saved reply so that if you got a new member or you want, if somebody needs a reminder, you can grab that saved reply. We've got trainings on saved replies. If you search saved replies and you click the little teal button in the back office of Get Oiling, we've got some really simple, straightforward explanations of how that works. But that's definitely what I recommend that you do. Just make a saved reply, especially if you want to test an email out because you can plug that into a campaign or into a broadcast message. And text, and text. Saved replies for text is awesome. All right. Cool, cool. Thank you guys for great questions today. Holly, we got one more and we're going to wrap this up. All right. So Holly says, can you rearrange the order of your campaigns in your campaign library to put the most used ones at the top? Currently, we don't have a sorting feature, right? But you can search.
You can search now. Yeah. We've had a lot of requests lately for categorization or somehow better organizing those. So that's kind of percolated towards the top of our wishlist here. But we'll take a look at that at some point.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm really grateful for that. We have a bajillion campaigns. That's a, that's a newer feature that you've added, which is great. Awesome. All right. Thank you guys so much for all of your great questions today. Definitely check your emails for the download of these, these slides to walk you through exactly how to set your funnel up. Really excited to have you here. Come back next week. Send us your work. Hit like, you know, contact us. Show us your website. Show us what you're doing. We want to show your work off to the world. We're proud of you and the work that you're doing to differentiate yourselves, stand out, grow your business and make a difference in the world. So excited to serve you, honored to serve you, and we will see you guys next week.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Everyone.
Bye.